A regular meeting of the Celine City Council will come to order. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First order of business is to have a motion to approve the agenda as submitted. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve as submitted, Mayor Protem.
Support. Move Marl, seconded Rhodes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion is carried. We have two absences this evening, Mayor Driscoll and Councilmember Ping. Do we have a motion to excuse the absences of both?
So move.
Move Rhodes, a second?
Second.
Second.
Seconded Little, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion is carried. Citizen comments on agenda items under the Open Meetings Act. Any citizen may come forward at this time and may comment or question on items that appear on this agenda. Comments will be limited to three minutes per person and this citizen comment period will be limited to a total of 45 minutes. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Do we have any comments from citizens? Hearing none, we will move on to the consent agenda. The following consent agenda will normally be adopted without discussion, however, at the request of any citizen or council member, any item may be removed from the consent agenda for council discussion.
Move to approve and adopt as submitted.
Motion Rhodes to approve and adopt, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded Little, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion is carried. Public hearings. An application from Flatout Bread Incorporated for an IFT. It is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 20, 2010 memo from Finance Director Burgoyne regarding recommendation on IFT application in Flatout Bread. Do we have a motion to acknowledge receipt?
Move to acknowledge receipt.
Second.
Move Marl, seconded Law, all those in favor.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion is carried. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing, affording the applicant and taxing units an opportunity to be heard?
So move to open.
Mayor Law?
Support.
Seconded Rhodes, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Do we have those who would want to speak regarding this motion?
Move to close the public hearing.
Hearing none, we will entertain Mr. Marl's motion to close the public hearing. Do we have a second?
Support.
Mr. Rhodes, seconds, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. So we have a motion then to approve and adopt or not adopt the resolution approving application of Flatout Bread Incorporated for industrial facilities exemption certificate in the amount of $41,083 for building and land improvements excluding land cost and $1,274,228 for machinery, equipment, furniture, and fixtures for a total project cost of $1,315,311 for a period of five years, subject to the terms and provisions of the tax abatement agreement to be entered into by the applicant to authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to execute said tax abatement agreement between the city and Flatout Bread Incorporated as prepared and approved by Attorney Grossman.
Move to approve and adopt.
Support.
Move Little, seconded Rhodes, discussion. Mr. Burgoyne, do you have anything to add?
No, the Special Projects Commission recommended this.
Councilmembers, Mr. Law?
Just that I'll be voting in favor of this motion. It's always a good thing when a company in Celine obviously invests in the community and Flatout Bread has been part of the community for some time and to have them again, it seems, grow in their business, I think is a good thing for not only them obviously, but for the whole city.
Councilmember Marl, did you have something?
No, I did not.
Councilmember Rhodes?
A little redundant here, but I also wanted to congratulate Flatout Bread on their ability to expand their operation and we very much appreciate their additional investment in the city of Celine. And then a question, because I don't remember the resolution of it specifically, but some time ago, Councilmember Ping, I believe it was, had asked the question about whether or not there was a process to verify the number of jobs that proposed new employees that came with these exemptions. I don't recall the answer to that.
Yes, well, in February, we did send out requests at the same time that the personal property statements were due back and I haven't seen those tabulations, but I'll follow up and we'll get you the information as a response.
So at the moment, it's a voluntary compliance with that request?
Right.
Any other questions from council members? City Manager Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Kathy from Flatout is here, if you have any questions for her or she, you're right on time, I guess, so I didn't know if anybody may not know.
I did not know that, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Kathy, would you please come to the podium?
Hello?
Thank you for attending. I have a question, Kathy, regarding the new jobs to the city of Celine.
Yes.
In the 2008 application, at that time, business name was Patco Incorporated, we have since rectified that, but.
Right.
In June of 2008, we stated that there were going to be, based on the approved IFT at that time, 25 new jobs and the IFT that we are considering this evening states that there are 10 proposed new jobs.
Right.
Can you help me with whether or not we've achieved the 25?
Does that say how many?
According to the 2008 projection?
Does that say how many we had at that point in time?
No, I don't have that information as to how many were on the payroll at that time.
I believe it was approximately 65 and we were using some temporary agencies to help us out. Now we are at almost 100 employees.
So, given that figure, we certainly have achieved the 25, looking back at the 2008 projection?
Right, and the 10 is a low estimate because we estimate that in adding an additional line, it takes at least 11 employees, we only put 10 on the application, but, you know, we're hoping for more growth than that, but 10 is the minimum.
Excellent, well, that, thank you, that very much helps me with making a decision onto whether to support this motion, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Any other questions for the applicant? Hearing none, then we'll move on to a vote. It's a motion, as we discussed, to approve and adopt or not adopt. Do we have a vote? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. Let's move on then to new business. Item 10-117, 2010 Harvest of the Arts Oktoberfest. It's a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 12, 2010 letter in application for community event use of public ways from Terry Sebo Koenig on behalf of the Celine Downtown Merchants Association to acknowledge receipt of the July 23, 2010 memo from Police Chief Bunton, the July 28, 2010 memo from Public Works Director Fordyce, and the July 28, 2010 memo from Fire Chief Heft to approve or not approve the Harvest of the Arts Oktoberfest event to be held on Saturday, September 25, 2010, as applied for, including authorization for the beer wine tent utilizing North and South Ann Arbor Street and parking lots number one and four, subject to the following conditions. One, that the traffic engineer issue the required temporary traffic control orders for the street closings. Two, that a permit be obtained from MDOT for the closing of the left turn lanes on Michigan Avenue. Three, that a certificate of insurance be provided by the Downtown Merchants Association with the city of Celine as an endorsed additional insured party for this event. Four, that a certificate of liquor liability insurance be provided for the beer wine tent with the city of Celine as an endorsed additional insured party, that all fees over and above normal operating costs estimated at $450 for the portageons and hand washing stations be waived. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Move Rhodes, seconded Marl. All those in favor? Discussion? Hearing no discussion, let us continue to vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion is carried. Next item on new business, 10-118, construction contract for 2010 sanitary sewer rehabilitation project. It is a motion to acknowledge receipt of the July 25, 2010 memo from City Superintendent Engineer Ruble to award or not award the contract to D.N. Higgins Incorporated for the 2010 sanitary sewer rehabilitation project in the amount of $103,699.20 to authorize or not authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the contract documents with D.N. Higgins Incorporated for this project after review and approval by the city attorney. Do we have a motion?
Move to award and authorize.
Move Marl, do we have a second? Chair will second. Discussion. Mr. Ruble, do you have anything to add?
I think Mr. Rhodes had a question, I don't know if he wants to ask first or?
Well, it was more of a comment than a question, that is, I was a little disappointed to see that Detroit Edison is only willing to pay for half of the cost of the damage that they caused and I understand and I realize they're the kind of the 800 pound gorilla in the room, but still, if we did something to one of their lines, we would have to pay 100 percent, if I'm sure. So I don't know if it's possible to go back to them on that particular line item.
I did go back twice with them, with the 800 pound gorilla and the problem was that the cause of the damage to the sewer happened 10 or 11 years ago and it didn't surface until now because the, it happened between the 10-year intervals that the line is being televised and monitored for surcharging and cleaning and repair. So it happened when the clinic was built, the doctor's clinic or dentist clinic was built and wasn't found out until last year when we did the routine televising. Unfortunately, the misdig records for both DTE and the city were expunged after seven years because there are only seven year period that to keep those. So we could not say whether it was a misdig call-in error or a misdig, you know, notification on their part or failure to have it marked out on our part. So that became the obstacle of actually determining if there was any fault, 100 percent one way or the other, DTE versus the city. So I worked with George on it, I worked with DTE on it and, you know, we researched the records and could not find, did we respond to misdig, you know, was there a misdig? The records just weren't there and DT was not going to pay any part of the cost whatsoever. Their first response is that they are responsible for claims after this date or, you know, that length of time. And we persisted by having them reopen it, consider other, you know, arguments and that and so forth and we talked to Molly Coy, our representative who lives locally and she was able to work with the claims people and on our behalf and they basically said, okay, we'll, you know, we'll pay 50 percent.
I appreciate your persistence and follow-up with that is, I'm not sure where what misdig is, if that's an independent body or agency that's under contract, all utilities, but is there a possibility of getting some reimbursement from them? Whoever they are?
That I don't know.
I just know it's misdig, but it's probably not a young lady out there.
I don't think they're, they could be held responsible for anything in this case, you know, because if people call them in, I mean, they're not responsible if someone doesn't call in, you know, and they're not responsible if someone doesn't respond to mark out utilities. They're sort of just the voice, you know, they're just the messenger, the go-between to make sure people don't damage other people's utilities.
It's the infamous they hiding behind the shield somewhere, yeah, okay. Anyway, thanks, appreciate your effort to get what you got.
Thank you, Mr. Ruble. Just as a comment, that's my understanding too, that misdig or 811 as it is now being promoted, that we contact 811 rather than misdig when we're trying to dig something up, that they are just a communication aspect and they're not responsible for any problems that might ensue. Do we have any other questions from council to Mr. Marl, did you have a question?
I did not.
Mr. Wall?
Mr. Ruble, about the almost $30,000 higher estimate, you did go in some details to why. It seems that everything has gone up, which is no surprise, but I was just wondering why so maybe in the grand scheme of things, 30,000 isn't high, but it's a lot of money, just the same, if you could sort of go over that for us?
Be glad to. The, on the other side of the coin, the last two projects that we're actually under, when we finished out on our Northern Arbor Street project, that was the, of course, the ARRA project, the Asbils came in under the bid by quite a bit and it also came under the, around the obligation mod sheet. In that project, we were committed to spending any overreach of the 210,000, but we came in under the 210,000, so rather than spend extra money, we actually did not have to spend any extra money on ARRA, it turned out to be 100 percent funded grant, we only had to cover the engineering costs. And then the recently bid MDOT project for Willis Road came in under by $100,000. Now that is a direct $100,000 savings to the city, not just to 80 percent to MDOT, 20 percent to the city, but that, in that case also, the 100 percent, the $100,000 is totally city savings because our match was more than the 20 percent. So again, we get all the savings there. Reason those drives came under, because they're highly competitive standard street project with asphalt, concrete, and those items where there's a lot of competition and that's where the government stressed competition and expanded the jobs and the opportunities. In the sewer repair business, we have, as I mentioned, several unique types of repairs, but they're all necessary to cure the woes here and they're in some difficult areas, especially the ones in the Woodlawn Drain area, there's four or five in the area of the Woodlawn Drain and very difficult to get to, very marshy soil, weeds, sticks, trees, and the elements. And so mobilization and accessibility is more difficult and the fact that the contractor has to hire three or four subcontractors and so what we have is small items of work that take a great effort, whereas in the street work, you can, it's more competitive, you have large quantities, you have economy scale and the case of the sewer repairs, they're fairly unique, it's sort of like a specialized repair required and so it's unfortunate, but that's, that's just the nature of doing these kind of repairs. So we did look in depth at why the estimate or the bid was bigger than the estimate is just, and I guess the biggest thing is, it's very difficult to do an estimate in this case too.
Until you actually see what you're up against, is what you're saying?
Right, I mean, some of these, it's difficult to know the exact cost because there is not a lot of this type of work bid out like this where we have eight locations and we have several different types of repairs and having to deal with different subcontractors and the situation with their location made it difficult probably for the contractor to bid also.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ruble. Any other questions regarding this motion? Hearing none, then we shall move on to vote. Just to refresh your memory, it's a motion to award the contract to D.N. Higgins and authorize the mayor and clerk to execute the documents to do so. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion is carried. We'll move on then to the discussion items. Do we have any commission or committee reports from council members this evening? Mr. Marl?
Yes, thank you, Mayor Protem. Last week, the Historic District Commission met on Tuesday and had a rather eventful meeting and there were two sort of quasi-action items that I wanted to bring to my colleagues' attention tonight, the first of which is, I believe, on the 16th of August, which is our next meeting, we shall have some language before us relating to changing the HDC ordinance, which requires council's approval. And currently, what has happened is there's several items, several projects rather, that an individual can do to the exterior of their home and their property that no longer require building permits. And the HDC, on a split vote, mind you, decided that we would like to incorporate those things back into the ordinance and although it doesn't require a building permanent, permit, excuse me, we would like to have the ability to review and possibly reject certain projects and renovations to the exterior of a home or property. Again, that was a split vote, but Mr. Fordyce, who's our staff liaison, indicated that that should be before us on the 16th. And then also, there was a discussion about Union School and HDC passed a resolution unanimously encouraging the Planning Commission to rezone Union School, not in a C2 or C1 classification, but rather in an OS classification, which is a little bit more restrictive and either classification or either one of the three classifications, to my understanding, wouldn't affect the current business that's going to be going into the facility, but an OS classification would limit who the company could sell the building to if they ever decided to relocate or to let go of the property. I don't know when that will be going to planning, but those are both action items, again, quasi-action items of sorts, and I wanted to make sure that you were all aware of them. And again, the ordinance change, I believe, will be before us on the 16th.
Thank you, Mr. Marl.
Thank you.
Any other commission or committee reports from council members? Hearing none, then we'll move on to any reports or other announcements. Councilmember Rhodes?
We have three representatives from the Harvest of the Arts Oktoberfest in our audience this evening and since they did not have an opportunity to come and talk with us before we voted, I would like to request that they come up for the benefit of our viewing audience and talk about the event.
Chair approves.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening and thank you, first off, for supporting Harvest of the Arts Oktoberfest this year. This is the sixth year for our event and this is the second year that I will be chairing it along with Helen Martin, who chairs the art show, and Rebecca Schneider, who chairs Oktoberfest, and Fire Chief Heft, who chairs the chili challenge. There are a lot of components to this event and we're very excited this year to be adding some new things. I did hand out postcards that we are distributing, we have a couple thousand of these and we're going to start distributing them sort of right after Summer Fest-ish to start raising awareness for our event. Some of the things that we do every year are the art fair and the firefighter's chili challenge, where we pair a firefighter with students from the South and West Consortium's culinary program at the high school and the money that is raised from the chili challenge goes to support a scholarship for students studying culinary arts. And this year, we were able to present a $500 scholarship to, oh gosh, I forgot his name, Curtis. Anyways, a very nice young man who's going to a very prestigious culinary school, so we're very excited about that. The Lindenberg Friendship Group will be serving German food again, along with Metzger's potato salad. We will have a beer garden, of course, and this will be the first year that the downtown merchants are actually going to apply directly for the liquor license and your support will help us in that application and we appreciate that. We've invited some new performing acts from Frankenmuth, we're inviting the Frankenmuth Shoe Plattlers and Polka Riot to perform during our sort of dinner hour and they are supposed to be just engaging and fun and sort of quirky and we're expecting them to be a good draw for our event. 212 Art Center is again going to participate with an inspiration station and we'll invite the Scrap Box from Ann Arbor to do kids hands-on activity, activities. The Big Speed Puppetry Festival will coincide with our event again and they have been awarded a $2,000 grant from McCaca of the Michigan Council for the Arts. So we're looking forward to working with them again and we'll be partnering with the First Presbyterian Church to do the quilt show for the event this year. Two new things for our event, we're actually partnering, partnering with a group called the Waschnau Wanderers to do a traditional Volksmarch, which is a, the Waschnau Wanderers are part of an internationally sanctioned walking sporting group and this is going to be a sanctioned walk, it's a 5K or a 10K, they will mark out a route that starts in the downtown area and it's a very interesting group and you can actually sign up for little prizes from them, so that's a sort of an interesting addition to our event this year. And lastly, we've added a children's activity area that we're calling Kinderplots. Heidi McClelland will be chairing that area and we're inviting local service organizations and children's groups, PTOs, to do some free activities for the children and also promote awareness of their organizations and the Rec Center will be bringing their inflatables for fun and we're hoping to get a petting zoo, but we're looking for some, some funding support, some sponsorship money for that. Is there anything I've left off, ladies? We're really excited about this year's event and we will be doing an event preview party at Spotted Dog Winery on August 26th, excuse me, from 6 to 9 and that is an open event, we're going to do a little tasting of John's, what is it, Spotless White, which is a Gurtz Remainer. We'll be tasting a little German white and a little German food and a little German music and hoping to do a little bit of an auction to support the event and raise some funds for things like the petting zoo. Key Bank has also signed on as a major sponsor again this year, so we're looking forward to working with them. Are there any questions? That's a lot of stuff.
Councilmember Rhodes?
Yeah, matter of question, just a comment, it should be a lot of fun like it always is and my apologies to Chief Heft for not including him in the group to come up because besides the chili thing, there's something else you're doing. Are you doing chicken dinners, that?
Yeah, chicken before chili.
That's, that's Summer Fest. Summer Fest is chicken.
Oh, okay.
Oktoberfest is chili.
Okay, I got it.
We keep getting them confused too. Well, thank you very much for your support.
Thank you, ladies, very much. It seems to me that the Harvest of the Arts Oktoberfest is getting better every year and thanks so much for all of you who are involved in the planning and the directing and the management of this event. It's becoming a very significant event for Celine. Thank you so much. Do we have any other reports or announcements? Mr. Law?
Just speaking of festivals, the Winter Fest, our committee's been meeting often on and it's on January 29th, I know it's a ways away, but before you know it, it's going to be here, but I wanted to sort of dovetail that with the ice rink that we've been working on as well. Heart Trap, the downtown director is going to be soon giving a proposal to city council as to a location or a proposed location for the ice rink. There are a couple of areas that we've been talking about. of areas that we've been talking about, sort of narrowing it down. And he's going to bring a proposal to the council. I don't know when exactly. I would think either it's going to be the next meeting or sometime in September.
Mr. Marl.
Yeah, just real quick, Mayor Protem, I wanted to give a quick plug for the Summer Music Series. And I noticed that on Facebook, you posted some information regarding the series or the concert that occurred this previous Friday, which I also attended. And I want to say that the band that played had a great diversity of music in their repertoire. The weather was beautiful. There was a wonderful turnout. It was really a great event downtown on Friday night. The restaurants were doing, really doing a gangbuster business. And so for those of you who are watching or in the audience tonight and have not made it up yet to one of our Summer Music Series, I strongly encourage you to do so because they are a lot of fun. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Marl. I'll second that. It was an excellent performance, one of the better bands that I've seen this summer here at the Summer Music Series.
Yeah, it was very nice.
Really appreciated that. Are there any other reports or announcements? Mr. Rhodes.
Sorry, one last time. I think that most of us received this packet in our council packages requesting some action on our community's part to, in respect with September of this year being National Alcohol and Drug Addiction Recurrent Month. And I am not sure what the proper method is to move forward with that, but I think that the community could well support that and perhaps a resolution if nothing else.
I think I've got a request to do.
Okay, good. Thank you.
So I'm hearing that there is a pending request to make that a resolution for our council here in the next meeting or two. Correct? Any other discussion items to be heard? If not, then we'll move on to public comment. Under the Open Meetings Act, any citizen may come forward at this time and may comment or question to city council. This public comment period will be limited to three minutes per person. Anyone who would like to speak is requested but not required to state his or her name and address for the record. Do we have any public comments this evening? Hearing none. Is there any other business to come before this, the city council this evening? Not, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Move to adjourn at, what do we got, eight-oh-two, eight-oh-three? Marl, do we have a second?
Second.
Second little. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion is carried. We are adjourned. Thank you.